I call to order the Board of County Commissioners' work session for May 12th, 2015. Please join us for the pledge of allegiance and salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every hand of our trust for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico. This is a simple, perfect friendship among the I-.
Somebody nailed him when he was in water. They apparently missed him when he stood up.
So, first of all today, I think it's very important that everybody knows that the county and everybody within the county is thinking about the Robinson family and Brian and wish him get well soon. He's an integral part of Grant County and also an integral part of the economics of Grant County. And we all hope that he gets well and can come back and fix us if we need to be fixed as soon as possible, so.
We hope we don't need him.
We hope we don't need him, but we're happy as heck he's here when we do need him. And also Linda Voskus, our finance director's father-in-law, passed away last night, so if you'd join me in a moment of silence for the Voskus family, I'd appreciate it. Thank you very much. Okay, first item on the agenda today is to approve the work session agenda. Madam manager, is there anything needs to change on the work session agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion, a proper second. To approve the work session agenda, is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify and say an aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. The purpose of the county work session is to inform Grant County Board of Commissioners of the agenda items that will be addressed at the next regular meeting and for the department heads and other elected officials to communicate with the commissioners in regard to matters of their respective departments. In accordance with Grant County Resolutions Number 1501, we welcome the public to attend the county work session. However, there will be no public input permitted at this meeting. At this time, we'll review the May 14th, 2015 regular meeting agenda. Charlene.
We will have another public hearing to discuss increasing the size of the Board of County Commissioners from three to five members. Moving on to financial reports. Item B, approved/disapproved, May 11th, 2015 expenditure report. Expenditure report for period ending 5/11/2015 includes accounts payable checks, beginning check number 174563, ending check 174877. Those AP checks include check number 174588 Tri-City Landfill Authority for monitoring fees in the amount of $27,205. Check number 174597 to Fuel Center Plus for diesel in the amount of $16,594.60. Check number 174625 to Malloy Dodge for the purchase of a 2014 police Charger and 2015 Dodge 1500 in the amount of $50,484. Also, check number 174641 Ascent Aviation Group for Jet A fuel for the airport in the amount of $17,451.83. And finally, check number 174664 to the New Mexico Human Services Department for the Safety Net Care Pool payment in the amount of $271,114.55. This also includes payroll checks for pay period nine in the amount of $206,378.05. Total AP checks $1,403,626 for total expenditures of $1,610,405.
Any questions on the expenditure report? Okay, go ahead and go through the cash flow.
Cash flow analysis for period ending 2/28/2015 for the general fund. Actual cash balance of July 1, 2014, $2,379,621. Revenues year-to-date, $5,909,434. Transfers year-to-date, $1,268,910. Operating expenditures year-to-date, $2,115,077. Salaries and benefits year-to-date, $3,997,536. Projected transfers in in the amount of $432,960. Projected transfers out of $1,445,892. Projected revenues of $5,527,467. Projected operating expenditures of $679,805. Projected salaries and benefits, $2,306,765. With a projected cash balance at the end of June 30th, 2015 in the amount of $2,435,496, leaving a cash surplus of $73,443. Cash flow analysis for the road fund for the period ending 2/28/2015. Actual cash balance as of July 1, 2014, $120,460. Revenues year-to-date, $424,881. Transfers year-to-date, $333,216. Operating expenditures year-to-date, $180,967.16. Salaries and benefits year-to-date, $864,338. Projected transfers in through 6/30/15, $506,238. There's no projected transfers out. Projected revenues, $462,193. Projected operating expenditures, $173,043. Projected salaries and benefits, $433,861. With projected cash balance at the end of June 30th, 2015 of $194,779, leaving a cash surplus of $57,095. Cash flow for the corrections fund. Actual cash balance as of July 1, 2014, $26,163. Revenues year-to-date, $733,099. Transfers year-to-date, $835,132. Year-to-date operating expenditures, $431,123. Salaries and benefits, $1,329,534. Projected transfers in through 6/30/2015, $835,132. There is no projected transfers out. Projected revenues, $240,547. Projected operating expenditures, $217,737. Projected salaries and benefits, $677,532. Leaving a projected cash balance at the end of June 30th, 2015 of $14,145. Any questions?
Any questions on that, gents? Thank you very much. We can move on to the next page.
Recognition of proclamation recognizing 16-time state champion, Cobre High School Band.
Is anybody planning they're gonna be here early enough to open with us? They are putting up play the Star Spangled Banner for us? Great.
Item E is another proclamation, approved/disapproved. Proclamation declaring the week of May 30th through June 6th, 2015 as first to Mexico Bank Wild, Wild West Pro Rodeo Week. Item F, approved/disapproved, the following persons to be appointed or reappointed to the Grant County DWI Planning Council. Cindy McLean has recommended the following individuals be appointed or reappointed. Heidi Ogos, Mike, uh-oh, I don't know how you say his last name. Baraghi?
Baraghi.
Baraghi. Lee Mullen, Kathy Hunt, John Holbeam, Brett Jensen, and Kendra Milligan. Item G, approved/disapproved, the appointment of Michelle Beasy. Did I slaughter that one too? That's Beasy. Our N to the Grant County Food Policy Council for the 2015-2016 term.
When do we take, I don't know, that's ours. I was thinking health.
Next, item H, approved/disapproved, the purchase of a Type 6 brush truck in the amount of $139,917 for the Whiskey Creek Volunteer Fire Department. They will purchase this through an HDAC contract, so it was not required to be put out for bid, and they do, they have state fire funds that they are purchasing the truck with. Questions so far?
Any questions?
Moving on to contracts and agreements. Item I, approved/disapproved, Agreement A 15-08. It's an agreement between the Mexico Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management and Grant County obligating award document for $45,000. This is to update the mitigation plan. It has a, the total award is $45,000. The federal share is $33,750 with a local in-kind share of $11,250. Item J, approved/disapproved, Agreement A 15-09. Agreement between the Mexico Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management and Grant County for a 2013 Emergency Management Performance Grant Program Award in the amount of $2,747.18. This is to purchase a new computer and equipment. Federal.
You're getting a 2013 grant?
I think it's leftovers, is what I understood from Goodwork. So, the federal award is $2,747.18 with the local in-kind match of $2,747.18. Moving on to bids. Item K, approve/disapproved, RFP 14-2 for Airport Engineering Services. There were five responses from Bohannon Houston, KSA Engineering, WH Pacific, Delta Engineering, and Armstrong Engineering. A selection committee has reviewed and scored the proposals with their recommendation being No questions so far?
Where's Bohannon Houston from?
Where are they from? Where are they from, Bohannon Houston? Where's their firm?
They are a New Mexico firm.
You have other questions or comments so far?
No, I don't think so.
Next item will be individual claims, approved/disapproved, health plan claims for April, for the period ending April 30th, 2015. There's a total of 57 claims in the amount of $39,647.88. Final item on the agenda will be executive session for Senate, New Mexico statute 1978 10-15-H, threatened or pending litigation regarding the governor's line item veto of Sunset Clause in Senate Bill 268 from the 2013 legislative session.
Thank you very much. Any questions on the agenda? Any additions? Do you want to strike anything? Today's the day.
Sound good? Okay, then.
I just want to say something. I'm not gonna be here on Thursday, so I just want to, you know, make a comment about that Cobre Band. They're pretty awesome. They played for the softball and baseball game the other day, and they just do a great job. I just wanted to congratulate the Cobre Band for their 16th state championship, especially being that I'm not gonna be here on Thursday. So, I just wanted to congratulate them. They did a great job. They did some presentations at their Cobre and softball games, and they played for us there. They just sound awesome. Just congratulations to those kids.
Okay, then, moving along, we're gonna start with county reports, and today we will start with the elected, so we'll start with the sheriff.
There's just a few things. There was a lot of activity this weekend. We had guestas going on, kept us pretty busy over the weekend. A lot of activity going on. We're trying to prepare for the graduations that are coming up for the high schools and Western, getting a little extra staff out, patrolling those nights. I'm also trying to prepare for the Blues Fest, which is also the end of this month. We're gonna be assisting the city with some of their details. My guess they're expecting a lot of bikers. They're having a bike event also during that time. Other than that, I have to report I'm fully staffed right now, so it's really helped out our group in doing our duties out there, and I want to commend them for a great job that they do for the community, keeping this community safe and going, so. Other than that, I have nothing else to report unless you have any questions.
How did the bike race go? Any incidents or things that we need to look at?
Actually, this year it turned out really well. Nothing major happened like the year before, but no, nothing negative. Everything was positive from the community, and even the, Mr., the guy from the bike thing said everything went well, so no issues.
What about the injuries, Sheriff?
Injuries, not many, no. Nothing.
That's good.
It was a really good event.
What's the plan for the bypass road and the, I can't think of the street, is it Black Street, between the courthouse and 90 while the bridge is closed?
What we have in communicating with the chief, they've changed the stop sign there at Broadway and Cooper. There's stop signs.
No stop.
Right. Now they're all three-stop. There used to be a yield going in to turn in, either go north or south. Now it's three-way stop. I know that the state highway has reduced the speed limit on 180 by truck bypass on 180 west, so that they reduced it to a lower speed. So, our plan right now is just to heavily patrol there for a while until people get used to the changes. It's not gonna be easy. I know there's gonna be a lot of people that are gonna be anxious to get to where they're going, because it's gonna be a change. So, we're preparing for that, just having extra patrols and coordinating with the city and helping them out. The majority of it is gonna be in the city, where they're gonna be dealing with a lot of the problems downtown, so.
Very little of the bypass road is in the city.
Right. There's none of the bypasses in the city. But, you know, that a lot of people are gonna want to use Cooper to come in instead of going through truck bypass, so that's where the majority of the traffic's gonna be flowing. So, we'll be helping them there and on truck bypass.
Okay. Thank you very much, Sheriff. Mr. Assessor.
Mr. Chairman, board members, can I get my report on Thursday? Today, we have Larry Brockman. He'll be here for the next two days, and we're gonna be meeting with him today and tomorrow. And I would like to see what exactly is gonna happen with our mapping and so on, so if you don't mind, I'd like to give my report on Thursday.
We'll have two meetings this month, and really the reports are due on Tuesdays, not on Thursdays.
Okay.
So, I'll let you do it this time, but you need to be ready on Tuesdays from here on out.
Well, I am ready, but I'll wait until Thursday.
We can wait till Thursday this time.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Treasurer.
We've been fairly busy in our office. Last month's report for 38 period, we had 286,776.87 collected, and so far, since the last report, in the 20-day period, we've collected $1,024,916.95. So, that's the, the deadline was Monday yesterday, so we're standing fairly well. We've collected 85.67% of the outstanding 2014 taxes, and that's the county's portion of it. That's not the full that we've collected, so just to be clear on that. One of the items that will be, we have requested, which is the third time that we request a position for a delinquent tax, well, we're gonna use the position as to focus on delinquent taxes. The problem is that we can only focus on mobile homes from February to April, and then we have to deal with the regular items with the delinquent property taxes, where the state comes in and does their thing for the sales. So, just as a sidebar, we kind of, we've kind of made it a point to keep track of what we've collected, and we've collected over $43,000 in that two-month period, focusing strictly on the delinquent mobile homes. So, we think that that position would actually, of this $840,000, we could whittle that down quite a bit. It's not, in other words, what I'm saying is by spending approximately $40,000 on a position, we could generate that amount plus bring this delinquent amount down to where it would actually be benefiting the county. We would be increasing the revenues to help pay for the positions for the new commissioners and so on and so forth, so just as a, you know, that's basically what we're trying to make our office more efficient, to be able to collect more of the revenue that's out there for the county, so.
So, we approximately have 16% delinquency, that's truly delinquent now, for this year?
No, well, see, that's the issue. That's something we're working with the assessor's office. We have a lot of value out there that really isn't there, especially with the mobile home things.
What percentage of that 840,000 is mobile homes?
Probably about 275,000 of this 840 is mobile homes.
Is that a guess, or is it kind of a?
No, that's what it was at the end of last month. We had $278,000 outstanding in delinquent mobile homes. Now, see, now that, actually, that's gonna change, because as we collect some, others now are now delinquent as of yesterday. So, see, it's, it changes.
What exactly would this person do in this new position?
Well, what we're thinking, the reason that we're, we're actually thinking of moving one of the people in our office that's sort of in our office, but not read between the lines, I guess, unless you want me to just say it.
I just want to know what, I don't care who goes where. What would this new position do?
They would be focusing on the delinquent taxes year-round. That would be, because we don't, we don't have the staff to concentrate on those, I mean, we have to concentrate in, you know, different, at different times. This person would be focusing on it, you know, year-round, 12 months out of the year, and.
So, all they would do is go out and look at properties?
They would make sure that the properties that we say are there are there as far as the delinquencies. They would, it would be kind of working with the assessor's office to clear up all of that, a lot of that, and we have cleared a lot of it up right now, in the last, you know, whatever, there's.
Is it split with the assessor's office currently, or? Because the assessor's office gets monies for appraisers, correct?
That's correct, sir.
I mean, why aren't we using the appraisers then to do this job?
I don't know.
It's just that they're identified these.
We have in the past, we've given the assessor's office the list of the mobile homes that we have outstanding, and in a couple of years, we went out ourselves to see if they were actually there. And when they, when we found that they weren't, then we would send the information to the assessor's office for them to deal with it however they, you know, but, so that's basically, you know, like I say, we're, but it's not just the mobile homes. I mean, we, we, it's not just those that aren't there. I mean, when there's actually delinquent, we need to work them, and it's not his job or the assessor's job to, yeah, it's our job to collect those, so that's what we're trying to.
Go ahead, bro.
Mr. Chairman, board members, I believe what Steve's trying to say here is a lot of these manufactured homes, they're either not livable, or they've been moved to certain areas without the proper paperwork and so on, and it's creating such a false value, and I guess that's exactly what he's trying to clean up on these false values on these manufactured homes, and there's also homes that are collecting the solid waste that aren't supposed to be, you know, producing solid waste. And I do believe that that's where he's pretty much working at. Our assessment process, we do have four positions going out within this next week, and two Appraisers Ones, one Title Examiner, and an Appraiser Four. And by the time we get all this staff into the assessor's office, we will be doing a lot of the reviews. And come by the end of this year, we're gonna hit the reappraisal pretty hard, because it hasn't been done for the last year, year and a half. But I do believe that when he cleans these manufactured homes, they can't go up for auction due to the fact that it is personal property, and that's where the issue is. And matter of fact, I went and saw three manufactured homes yesterday where they were not livable, they were not collecting solid waste, and I think we have to, you know, we get together with the county treasurer's office to make that determination, to see if they are livable and they should be paying for the solid waste, but that's exactly what he's trying to clear up, is a lot of these manufactured homes. We do have an individual that did work in the assessor's office, and he understands the appraisal process pretty good, so he pretty much goes out and does a lot of the field works on these manufactured homes. But anything in that detail, we go out and do the field work. That is correct, there.
Well, I'm just concerned about the amount of money it costs to hire somebody, but if we're already having appraisal process, and that should be accounted for in the appraisal, although the delinquents, I know it's part of the treasurer's office, but maybe there could be a team effort between you all and help us cut some costs.
That's what we're doing now, but, I mean, that's to clean up the things that are out there that shouldn't be on the tax roll, and that's, you know, that's the thing that, that's not gonna be the main focus of this position. It's gonna be where.
Now you're doing something about it.
Yeah.
That's the main thing.
Appreciate you looking at it. From what you said and what Mr. Poretta has said, apparently that we're premature. If in fact you get these other folks on board, you may not need it full-time. And so, to do what you, I don't know what, hold on, let me finish. To do what you suggested that you would be doing, okay? Now, you may have other things that you want them to do, but you suggested that this is all that they would be doing, and part of that could be done by these individuals that would be employed by the assessor. You keep interrupting me.
Delinquent taxes, and I'm not talking about the stuff that's assessed that shouldn't be, you know, that doesn't have value. I'm saying the ones that are delinquent. I mean, a large percentage of this 840,000 is actual delinquent accounts. That's not his responsibility. It's our responsibility. We don't have the manpower currently to work them full-time to be, you know, out there, and I'm not saying to try to take people off the tax roll, I'm just saying, collect what's out there. And like I say, this number isn't gonna change a whole lot until we actually do something about it, and we have somebody out there doing the collections, and it, as some people are collected, other people are becoming delinquent, so it's gonna ebb and flow. It's not gonna be like we're gonna get rid of this and then we're never gonna have delinquent taxes again. That's not gonna happen. It's just that the reality, unfortunately. And the worse the economy gets, the worse the delinquents get.
I think that you, you both have made a, a great argument for the same thing that the public has been saying for years and years and years, that the form of county government that we currently have with all these elected officials not being able to do, work it as well together as we would, as you'd like to, 'cause there, you have your job or he has his job. Um, I think that shows a lot of the community's frustration, especially on property taxes and values and who you pay, and, uh, you're making a terrific argument on, on some changes that probably need to come, um, statute-wise, but, uh, we will look at, at the budget. First of all, we're gonna look at revenues and see where we are. If we're sixteen percent delinquent at this point in time, um, that's going to, to hit our revenues at, at a pretty high level, so we'll just have to see where we are in revenues, and we'll spend accordingly and, and, uh, 'cause we won't overspend our revenues.
Well, and like I say, I really believe that this position will not only pay for itself in the collections, but will also expand the collections beyond their, the, the cost. So it's, it's, to me, it's a win-win situation.
Great, well taken. All right, Mr. Clerk?
I'll report. This business, as usual, kinda sitting on our hands waiting for this, whether we're gonna go five-man or not, just, yeah, kinda waiting. We're just waiting.
Don't have a clue. Okay. Mike? Where's your report? I got it right?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commission members. Respectfully submit my report for April sixteenth through May eleventh. Item number one, status remained the same. Item number two, um, we currently have four vacancies, uh, one full-time and three part-time, and we, uh, currently employed one individual who started on March eleventh. On our detention, uh, item number three, the assessment, uh, status remained the same. Item number four, on a training update, um, currently Sergeant Mark Lucero and Officer Fisher attended crisis intervention training. Lieutenant Aguirre, Sergeant Galindo, and Sergeant Lucero attended training, uh, on interaction with persons having mental impairments. Deputy Administrator Lazzola is currently at the PRIA, which is the Sexual Assault Coordinator Training. He just, he's gonna leave today. On the inmate support program, um, the subgroup is continuing to meet, and we're currently working on future plans for the program. We're continuing with that. Item number four, on our recognition and awards program, the week of May the fourth through the eighth was designated as Corrections Appreciation Week. Employees of the Detention Center were asked to vote on who they felt were deserving of the following awards. Corrections Supervisor of the Year award's gonna go to Sergeant Chris Lucero. Officer of the Year, uh, on each respective shifts, there are Officer Roxanne Sines in day shift, Officer Lisa Lucero evening shift, and Officer Jenny Paranti on graveyard. Dip DeAndezol and I, um, donated appreciation prizes to each of the officers along with other prizes that will be, uh, we'll put their names in a hat and we'll draw that out on Wednesday, and we're gonna do, uh, we prepared some certificates for them in the lobby, uh, the Detention Center at two o'clock on Wednesday, and they're all invited to attend if you'd like to, if you have the time to go do the presentation to these officers. Uh, the department congratulates the supervisors and the officers that were selected by their peers, and I'd like to express my gratitude to the entire staff for their dedication, sacrifice, and commitment to the Grand County Detention Center. On our detention statistics, item number seven, uh, this is for the month of April sixteenth through May eleventh. The daily population, uh, average daily population is fifty-four, two more than last month. A high population males is sixty, which is six more than last month. High population females is ten, one less than last month. And for the same reporting period, there were sixty-eight inmates booked into the facility. Um, that's eleven more than the last reporting period, and this shows an increase in activity. The average length of stay for this reporting period is seven-point-five-one days, and on the graph that I provided for you on the population statistics, the graph, and this is new bookings from January first through May eleventh, the graph for the month of May shows an increase in the average monthly males, a decrease in the average monthly females, and an increase in the average monthly inmate totals. Item number six, on our arrest totals, I broke this down to April and May, uh, because of the reporting period. Silver City Police Department in April, they had a total of ninety arrests, and in May to date, they've got thirty. Grand County Sheriff's Department in April had sixteen, and, uh, they have eleven in May to date. New Mexico State Police had fourteen, and they have nine to date. Bear PD had ten in April, and they have, uh, to date, they have six. Santa Clara had nine, and to date, they have one. Prairie PD had four, and to date, they have one, and New Mexico Gaming Fish had zero. Uh, the detention facility conducted fourteen district court transports. Uh, Division One, we had fifteen, Division Two, five. Silver City Municipal Court, we had five. Santa Clara Municipal Court, we had one, and, uh, Bear Municipal Court, we had zero, and we conducted nine, uh, medical transports for a total of forty-nine. And our jail occupancy utilization, uh, offense levels, we had twenty-eight felonies, sixty-four misdemeanors, uh, eighty-nine other probation violations and warrants for a total of one-hundred-and-eighty-one. Total hours in custody is twenty-seven-thousand-eight-one-eight-point-nine, and all the offense levels indicate that there's a slight increase as compared to last month. That's my report.
If you want, any questions for Mike?
I'm sorry, sir?
Oh. No, thanks, Mike. Appreciate it. Anthony?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, commissioners, I'd, I'd like to start my report by saying that we've been working with ASA Architects on the courthouse and on the Eviction's, um, uh, memorial out there at Baton Park, and, uh, to this day, I tried to get a home yesterday, uh, he was out of the office, uh, but we still don't have, uh, although we have a preliminary review of the courthouse, uh, ASA felt that they needed a second opinion on, uh, the scope of work for the courthouse, and so they currently have their engineer reviewing, uh, the courthouse needs. Uh, we're gonna keep on, we're trying to keep on hammering them, 'cause I, we know that we need to get that thing done right away and get out the bid as quickly as possible. Um, so, uh, I'll continue to work on that. Next would be, um, of course, on the Arizona Water Settlements Act, um, I have to apologize to the commission, I wanted to send out the most current, uh, JPA, uh, the, um, the commission was asked that JPA be, um, constructed and in order to create the, the New Mexico CAP entity. And the New Mexico CAP entity would, would have more authority over, um, design, build, and, uh, construction and, and, um, overall operations of a, of a New Mexico unit. And so, uh, currently, uh, what I wanted to do is, is kinda wait until, uh, everything was hammered out back and forth between the attorneys, um, so that I wouldn't give you ten drafts and, and it actually has become a little bit confusing to the, to the commission. And so hopefully, we have a clean draft, uh, for you to look at. It's gone before the Interstate Extreme Commission. Uh, they had some, uh, some suggestions and some questions about it, and so I will send that out today. I wanted to send it out yesterday, uh, because they wanted to, uh, to take a look at it again on the twentieth of this month. And, uh, after that, a resolution will come before the commission, uh, on whether or not they want to enter into the, to the JPA with Interstate Extreme Commission. Uh, each individual entity, uh, the Hila San Francisco Water Commission actually had requested that they become the CAP entity. Um, after the discussions, uh, they felt that they should be two separate entities, um, that the, uh, Hila San Francisco having their own, um, uh, duties and responsibilities to the AWSA, and the CAP entity more to the New Mexico unit, uh, which would be a potential diversion. And so, uh, I will forward those, that JPA to you. We've, uh, tried, uh, Mr. Domenici and, and the Hila San Francisco has tried to, to get a good joint powers agreement that will, uh, protect and, um, prevent, uh, any of our, uh, entities from, uh, from occurring, anything that we don't want to. We've changed some language, um, there's a few language changes from "shall" to "may" when, when you're, there's investments, uh, in, but, but certainly, uh, the Interstate Extreme Commission has made it clear that entities that want to enter into the, to the JPA and enter into, uh, what would be the New Mexico Unit Agreement, uh, there could be some investment from the, uh, from the communities, and so, uh, uh, they've made that, they've made that very clear. I think we already knew that in the fact that, that, you know, the, the AWSA funds are limited. Um, but at the same time, uh, being part of the CAP entity would allow us to, uh, to have a little bit more say in, in the actual design of the project. Um, I voiced my opinion several times on the size and the cost of the project and, and the, the overall design. Um, I've got some questions on, on exactly what they're trying to accomplish, and so, uh, as a CAP entity, uh, number one, you'd have a little bit more, uh, authority over the design of the project and the build, um, but it, and, um, we still have a kind of a safety net in that, uh, we don't necessarily have to sign, uh, the New Mexico Unit Agreement and that's gonna go to the Secretary of the Interior, so. Still a lot of negotiations between the Hila San Francisco and the, the ISC on, on what the exact duties are, that we've kinda hammered them out, and so hopefully, and I'll send that out to you so you guys can review it and, and, and comment, and, and then we'll, then, like I said, we'll have a resolution before, before the commission, uh, probably by the end of the month.
So, tell me again, exactly, there's gonna only be one CAP entity?
There'll be a single CAP entity. That's correct.
And, and who is that, who are they currently proposing to do that?
The CAP entity will actually be, um, will actually be anyone that actually joined, wants to join, that is a, recognized by the state as a, um, as a, you know, as a state governing entity, for instance, uh, Water Association, uh, the Secias, uh, the disassociations, any local government entity can be a part of the CAP entity.
To the AWSA area?
That's correct. That's correct. CAP entity is specific to, um, entities within the Southwest Region, and which would be Luna, Hidalgo, Granton, and the Kestrel Counties.
So the Hila San Francisco group would not be the CAP entity? They will continue to do what they've been doing?
That's correct. That's correct. It'd be two separate entities. Okay. I'm assuming that, um, from what, we have, I asked for letters of interest so that we could present to the Interstate Extreme Commission. Um, most of the members, uh, that are currently on the Hila San Francisco submitted letters of interest to become part of the CAP entity. So we're, we're seeing that probably, um, the structure of the CAP entity would be similar to the Hila San Francisco, um, but I think that there's gonna be a little bit more disassociations and, and, um, irrigators, uh, those type of, uh, entities. There'll probably be, it'll probably be a larger group actually than it actually is right now.
Any questions?
Just glad to see that you are finally gonna have a CAP, CAP entity, and, and thanks for all your hard work. I know it's been a challenge, you know?
It is difficult, because I think the Interstate Extreme Commission is wanting some, they're, um, wanting to place some responsibilities and burdens on, uh, the, the local governments, and we've been trying to make sure that there's language in there to protect us from, you know, from some of the things that they wanted to do, and, and they've been in agreement on some of them. And so, uh, it, it's kinda spelled out. Uh, you know, once, once we got past the attorneys and everybody was able, were able to take a look at a good document, and hopefully it'll be... Abby has not reviewed it yet, but I'll send it to you.
They've got some more attorneys to go through, so I...
Um, also, uh, we've still been working on, on Rosedale Road, uh, trying to get the utilities, um, done. We did have a review from the Rosedale Water Association. Uh, we haven't heard anything from them, but, uh, with anyone still trying to get, um, the telephone, uh, they're trying to, they had some requests on some changes they wanted to make, but we haven't had a response from them either, so. So to get those utilities, we can start putting stuff out to bid and get that thing under, starting under construction. Um, North Hurley also, uh, the remainder of the North Hurley project, uh, for the wastewater project, uh, currently under, uh, during the engineering again, on the facility that Phil Sidely's that didn't have, uh, that weren't able to tap in, they're gonna get those finished engineered, and also engineering on a solar unit to be able to, uh, to power that, um, that, that station, so. Uh, today, there's a meeting on the, on the regional water plan, uh, this afternoon, uh, that is for Southwest New Mexico. Um, I'm on that, uh, board, and, uh, there's actually a meeting, a day from one-thirty to, to four o'clock at the, uh, at the Silver City Annex, if anybody wants to, to show up and, and kinda listen in.
Anthony, where are you with the Mira Loma subdivision process?
The Loma Verde, sorry. Uh, I think that, um, I think that on our next meeting, we should have a public hearing, first public hearing. Um, then after that, the resolutions and, and, uh, the process will begin. We had to have a, there's a, the statute is pretty specific on, on, we had to hand-deliver a notice of the public hearing to each individual resident, and then you had a thirty-day waiting and after that, so we had to try and get all of those residences' notice and try and schedule the meeting, which will be in our next, in the next commission meeting, will be the first public hearing. And so we're trying to get started on the second one, which would be Wind Canyon, and try and run them simultaneously, um, but as, with as much work as we possibly can. There are some decisions that we want, that I wanna bring out to the commission, um, that we're gonna have to make and try and negotiate with the, with the residences, and, um, because what we're doing is we're taking loans out from Mexico Finance Authority to pay for the construction, so, and then we're trying to set up a way to pay that back. Well, right now, we're actually invoicing, um, each resident monthly, and so it takes a lot of administrative time to do the invoicing. It takes a lot of administrative time to, to do all the receipts, um, and sometimes we're invoicing for ten dollars, fifteen dollars, because, uh, there's a ten-year period that they can actually, um, take to, to pay that back. And so I think we need to take a look at the amounts that the people are having to pay, um, trying to reduce the overall time that there, that it's gonna take for them to pay, and maybe do some invoicing, you know, twice a year or, or once a year, or, or something like that, and so, so we kinda, we kinda have to learn as we go along, but we set it up last time to where it takes a lot of time for Ray to, you just to send out the invoices to fifty people.
I thought that that was added up to their tax?
No, it's totally, it's pretty separate from, uh, from their taxes.
Hmm, well, maybe... Maybe we need to give that job to the person in the treasurer's office that he wants to hire.
Yeah, they, they did collect the money, but as far as the receipts and the invoicing, um, it's all done out of time, you're all, yeah. So, but we can talk about that when we start to, start to structure the, the next one.
Yeah, I think that probably the learning curve was pretty big on the first one, but it sure seems like we're taking a long time on this one.
Yeah, and I, I've had a few people call me, especially the elderly, saying, "Oh, you guys forgot about us again," you know, so I'm glad you've given us an update.
Yeah, and it's just... It took us a year last time to get it done. We're hoping it's only gonna take eight months this time, so we're, we're, we're trying to get better at it.
Likewise, Wind Canyon, I continue to get phone calls about where we're at, so likewise on Wind Canyon, I appreciate, let us know where you're at, if there's movement or not, but I don't want them, and they keep thinking, "Well, we forgot." And I keep telling them, "No," and I, I had talked to you a couple of times before and then reported back to those people. So if you would, uh, in your reports, let us know where you're at and what the movement is for Wind Canyon also, okay?
Well, I think that, um, what the problem is, is that we have actually larger and larger amounts of people that are actually in the, in the assessment district, so it's gonna take actually a little bit more time to be able to get those things. Last time, I think there was twenty-six. This time, there's forty-four. I think whenever we get into Wind Canyon, it's up to like around, somewhere around eighty residents will be in the assessment district, so it's...
Appreciate the call, too.
It's, it's, yeah, it's definitely gonna be a more tedious, um, process, so.
I know, roads, my favorite.
The only other thing that I wanted to mention to the commission is that, um, they're updating the regional transportation, uh, plan for New Mexico. Uh, I've been trying to assist the, uh, the council of governments, um, I was in transportation for twenty-five years plus, so, so I've been able to try to assist that, so hopefully we'll have, uh, one of the main things that we've been, uh, trying to push to the state and their contractors is that, um, the amount of funding that's coming down from the state and the feds and the formularies that they use for local governments is, is outdated and certainly needs to be, um, taken, taken a look at, so hopefully they'll take that back to... So hopefully, they'll take that back to the secretary and to the governor's office. But anyway, that's all I've got.
Any questions, Anthony, from other subjects?
Well, and yes, I do have one more question, and maybe this would be for Charlene, but the billing process for the sewer system in North Hurley, what's going to happen there? Who's going to take charge of that? Are you taking charge of that also?
I think that the billing, currently the billing system, at least until the, until the loan is paid, which we had a USDA loan, that loan is paid back with revenues that come from the billing of the sewer. I think that currently Linda takes, Linda's been the one that takes care of that with their association. They do have a point of contact. They do all the billing, and then they actually, they do all the billing, then the money comes to us, we transfer that money.
To our water association.
That's correct.
And see, that's why I'm asking, because they told me that the association is for water, it's not for sewer?
There's a combination of the two.
Well, we're going to have to talk to them and let them know that because they're feeling that they should get paid for that part, the person that's doing all the billing, because it's causing a lot of, a lot more work according to what I was told.
And the same water drill?
That's something maybe needs to be taken care of.
Okay. So one other thing, we did have a colonias meeting here, the colonias board meeting last Thursday. I wasn't able to attend, but the manager told me that they really, they didn't award. We were hoping that they were going to award this year's colonias projects, and they didn't get that done. Apparently, there was some issues that they had to take care of before they were able to award, so hopefully in June. It's my understanding that we are actually up for two awards this year instead of just one, so hopefully, one being construction in North Hurley and the other being planning for Tyrone.
Where's the next colonias board meeting?
Socorro, I think that's what they said.
Anything else?
That's it?
Okay.
Thank you.
Earl, what you got?
Hi, how much? Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we're still working on our roads, getting ready for chip steel, and there's a rather cliff today. That should get all the major patching done. We might have to go back and hit a couple of spots here and there between now and the end of the month. We did get all of our chips hauled in. I've had a guy down there in Carlisle the last couple of weeks. I'm hoping to get him out of there in the next couple of days. I took a dozer down there to him this morning to get some drainage structures fixed up down there. Other than that, just business as usual. If the weather warms up, starts getting a little bit warmer, we will probably start chip sealing a little bit earlier since we still got Bear to take care of.
When are we going to be able to get that road open into the Hanover Cemetery?
I'm waiting on the mine right now. Our deal is done. They decided they wanted to fence that road in on both sides to keep people from going up down that creek. And so the last time I talked to Mr. Head, he said he was waiting on, he was going to have to go out to him and get bids, and that's the last I've heard about it. Other than that, it's ready to go. I will have to go and put a concrete slope on that cover that we put in there where it joins into the main highway there to get that permit, but that's about all I've got left to do on that.
Okay. Any questions, Earl?
No.
Thank you. Thanks, sir. Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, I'll start with public works, just real busy. Obviously, starting to warm up, graduations coming around, Compton Center, a lot of usage. Baton Park, the same way. We've got, actually Baton Park is going to be booked up until every weekend through October. So the closing of the Compton Center as we move forward will focus all of our attention at Baton Park. Industrial weed control has come, sprayed the weeds, help us maintain it, the weeds a little bit, not only at Baton Park but at the Detention Center, so we're doing that. Let's see, what else? Just keeping up with all the stuff, especially on the weekends, having the guys get out there and making sure that the facilities are clean, making sure that all the supplies that they need are out there. The airport, business as usual out there. We are working on a storm water protection plan for the airport along with the fuel spill containment plan. That's ongoing right now as we move forward. Now that we own the fuel farm, it's part of FAA requirements, so we're working on that. As you know, I put a slip in everybody's box, the boutique areas as of June 1st are going to make some changes because they've taken on more, I think, in other counties within New Mexico. So take a look at those, and hopefully they'll come out, let's see how it's going to come out, and make sure everybody's aware of that through their webpage and all the stuff that they have in May, the weekend system, and letting the public know there will be changes as of June 1st. Senior program, we've got some funds through the aging and long-term service capital appropriations project, so Justin and I and Terry are working on that to make sure that we can take a look at all of our senior centers and the upkeep and the equipment is all what this money is for, along with vehicles. So we're taking a look at that and making sure that the needs of the senior centers are going to be met with some of this appropriations. On the fire side, obviously great, we haven't had any major fires. We had a spot fire in Hatchita, which was about five to six acres. Pretty much the rain put that out. We're continuing to train. We had a 270 basic operations class up in Lake Roberts with a lot of our BFDs to understand air operations and how we deal with those and how we communicate with those. So I was happy to see a lot of our fire chiefs and officers there. I'm working with Tyrone right now, volunteer fire department chief Roger Groves. He's going to go through an ISO inspection next Thursday. As you know, last year, we had two ISO inspections with Fort Bear and Whiskey Creek. They were able to lower their ISO rating, which meant more funding for them, I'd say, going into next year. So we're hoping with Tyrone with their new addition. I know a lot of people have been asking about an open house and when we can have it. We just got done with that, and this ISO inspection came up, so when we get through all of this, then we're going to have an open house and be sure by the commission and then the public out there to see what we've done. So and again, Whiskey Creek and Fort Bear, their ISO rating went down, so we're hoping with Tyrone will do the same. Right now, they're ISO 6. Hopefully, we can get them down to maybe a 5 or even a 4, with the amount of work they put in. It's the biggest volunteer fire department in our county, having over 80 members and five departments within Tyrone, so Chief Groves has done a great job there. I want to thank all the BFDs for their help on the bike race. You know, we use a lot of our firefighters' trucks out there because a lot of people pull over the sides of the road. I think I sent an email out to everybody. Our EMS people helped out considerably, so I want to thank them for that. Other than that, Cota Caminos, we're getting ready for the booze fest. As you know, that's a pretty big event, and so we want to make sure that, you know, we have the proper transportation for people that need it and encourage everybody to use that service because it will benefit everybody in the community, not only the Sheriff's Department with traffic. And then the rodeo too, also coming up, working with, trying to make sure that we get transportation out there. So everything's coming at us pretty quick, but we want to be prepared and ahead of that. So we met yesterday with the Parks and Rec Committee. We're working with Fort Bear Medical Center, our Fort Bear Medical Facility, to put a path for an evacuation plan. They needed that in place. Just kind of got deemed on that last year. What we're going to do is working with the road department and some county services, with Earl, I want to thank him. We're going to have, hopefully, a paved way for them to get down to Baton Park in case there's a major evacuation. As you know, most of the patients are, will be transported out there on gurneys or beds, so they've got to have a surface to get down there. They will have a key to our facility so that if there is an evacuation plan, they're able to open up that gate that's going to be there and get them down into a safe place to be, which would be the Baton, I mean, excuse me, the Fort Bear Baton Park facility. So other than that, Mr. Chairman, I have nothing else to report, if you have any questions.
Just one, we had some problems in the exhibit building as far as the water, and there was a break in the line. We got that all fixed?
Oh, yes, yes, sir. Yes, Mr. Chairman, I can, Mr. Hall, yes, we had that fixed, but it's another thing we're taking on now with that, with the construction being done and making sure that we get the public works guys out there and take care of it.
Did we get that fixed?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So I'm done for all that, Mr. Chairman.
That's all. That's it. Thank you very much. Charlie, you got anything today? I guess what we need to do is probably add after K an assessor's report. That's okay with everybody?
What?
Anybody have anything else to say? I'd take a motion to adjourn.
Say again.
All those favor, 65, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.